I call this city council meeting to order December 3rd, 2024, 7:00 PM. We could scan and do the, what did the lead in? Writing, begin.
I am ready to begin this through the public, every in the states of America. And to the public, which is stands, one nation under God. In the midst of all, we are the people, just for all.
If I could have everybody please stand, we're gonna do a moment of silence for Mayor Sandy Tombs. She was the past mayor from 2013 to 2020. Her husband is Kevin Tombs, who is a, works at Riverside High School. Hope we can just take a moment of silence to recognize her. As far as a roll call, it looks like we're all accounted for. We'll start with approval of minutes, joint cities, county, court meeting, October 29th, 2024.
I'm going to approve the minutes of October 29th, 2024. Joint cities, county, court meeting as presented.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? City council workshop minutes, November 5th, 2024.
We move to approve the minutes, November 5th, 2024, city council workshop as presented.
No motion, is, do you have a second?
I have a second.
We've got time. Any discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City council meeting, city council, November 5th, 2024.
Move to approve the minutes, November 5th, 2024, city council regular meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Financial report, Mark.
Hi, thank you. I'm ending the month of October 31st, 2024. First one to point out at the bottom, the interest rates listed are as of October 31st, 2024. And as you noticed, they've all come down. We've been talking about that, that those interest rates were gonna start to come down. They, all of those have come down to 5%. Last month somewhere like at 5.65, 5.35. So we're starting to see that decline in the interest rates. It's been a, kind of a slow month, November, when property taxes are collected and start to come in. So in October, there's not hardly any activity with that. But in November is when the property taxes will, will come in. And that's the majority of our funds for a general fund and our debt service fund. I don't have much else to report for October unless you have some questions.
Anyone has any questions, feel free.
So the Bank of Eastern Oregon RNG is zero, does that mean that we've done that completely?
Yes, so all of those at the bottom there are the escrow accounts. So as the projects close out and we issue the final retainage agreements, those get closed out. We'll probably have another two or three closing out here between December and January as projects wrap up.
I think the interest rate is still pretty bleak.
That has to do with the escrow account that they are.
So if we move that. I guess my question would be is, if this was an escrow account at Banner Bank, would it be the same?
Yes, because these are controlled by ORS, it's the new law that came in with construction accounts.
Gotcha, thank you.
We'll go to the fun part, which I enjoy, is the previous pre-arranged presentations from schools. And we're really lucky today because we have all schools represented today. We'll start with Sam Boardman. On up ladies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Finley Connell. And my name is Danny Nichols. We are here to talk about things we are having at Sandborne Elementary School. But first let me tell you about how great our veterans day program was. We had 23 veterans attend along with their families and friends, which filled the gym. After our program, third grade students and veterans met for a reception where we got to talk to them and ask them questions. We also have our family feast, which many parents and other family members came to. Our parent teacher organization is meeting every month in planning activities for our school. Our winter concert will be December 12th. Our school kindergarten and first grade will have theirs at 5:00, at 5:00 PM. Their, then second and third grade start at 6:30 PM. Each program will be different, so please come watch and get in the Christmas spirit. The third week in December will be dress up days. Each day we will dress up in different things. Our last day of school before our break will be on September 20th. We hope you will have a great December and we will see you in January. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alright ladies, we're Wendy River.
Hello, city council, our names are
Miranda and Harper.
And we are here to give the monthly report from WRE. Last month, not that too. Oh, last month, the teachers had a semi paper dress up week. Which was not that discreet because we found out really quickly. Monday was wear all black day. Tuesday was walkie cup day, a dress up from a kid from WRE day. Miss Callan dressed up as Jackson and Melissa combined. Wednesday was dress up at Dippin' Kids. And Miss Cameron went blue from Roach and Pink. And Thursday was wear a holiday sweater day, we had Thanksgiving Christmas sweaters. Student council representatives have been elected for ASB. Our first meeting was today. We have also started our diagnostic testing. The already competitions have ended, could be assembly this month, in which the students with the wrong dressings will get a pie from Mr. Shannon or Mrs. Crowe. After the first quarter, we bought tickets and gave out three bikes. Thank you for your time and cool, cool.
Good job ladies. Alright Riverside juniors, juniors, hi. Any pull the mic up too a little bit? It won't break.
Good evening, good evening, the Boardman City Council. My name is Emma Perez and I am the eighth grade president of the junior high student leadership team. It's an honor to be here today, share some of the exciting events and activities happening at your school. As student leaders, we're proud to represent our peers and we're excited to talk about the ways we're making this school year more memorable.
It's fine, it's not working.
Hello, my name is Weston Elliott and I am an eighth grade vice president. Advance we're especially excited about is our upcoming game night on January 15th, 2025. Game night is a time for students to come together and have fun and build friendships. It's a great opportunity for everyone to show their school spirit and enjoy some friendly competition. We are looking forward to seeing how much fun our school community will have.
Another highlight of our school year has been our school dances. We've already hosted a dance this year and they were a huge success. These events give students a chance to have fun, relax and connect outside of the classroom. The energy was fantastic and we're excited to keep this tradition going with more dances in the future.
Along with all the exciting events we're planning, we've been working hard on fundraising to support our activities and make our school even better. From ticket sales to raffles, we've seen incredible support from our students, teachers and parents. The money raised goes directly to improving our school experiences, helping us fund things like events, supplies and other student needs.
We believe that events like game night, the school dances and our fundraisers really make, help make our school a positive and fun place for all the students. Very grateful for all the support of the Boardman City Council and everything you do to help us make these opportunities possible.
Thank you so much for your time and for letting us share what we've been up to at our school. We are proud of what we accomplished so far and we can't wait to see the rest of the year holds for our school and community, thank you.
Right, you're the next one.
Good evening, all council members and mayor. I am Ms. Rosa Salavosa and I'm representing Riverside from the senior classes. At our school, we currently have our Christmas dress up, which allows us to have a very great sense of school spirit. We also have door decoration, which allows us to create a good sense of competition in between classes. This is with the advisors and we allow a reward to the winning door. We also have a lot of class fundraisers. Currently we have the candy cane funds that we hope to get out on December 18th. And we also have the hot chocolate sales, we have FDLA who is currently selling chocolate bars. And you can also still buy those from any member of the FDLA. Leadership, juniors and seniors are currently running multiple fundraisers to raise multiple activities that they wanna run. Any donation, funds, items from any local businesses or community is greatly appreciated. We also have our first basketball game tomorrow, which will be for the girls' basketball JV and varsity. It will start at 5:00 PM. We will also be selling yearbooks at this event. We go from the eighties all the way to last year's graduating class. If you go and check it out, you can find whatever yearbook you want. We are also trying to expand in our projects as a community and we would love great ideas that our school can start. We do have the entrance of the school, which we would like to maybe paint or set up something there to get a better sense of spirit when you walk into our school. Any recommendations can be emailed to the school or you could call. We will also be hosting a blood drive on January 27th and this is from the National Honor Society from school. These are currently Oliver's events and programs that are happening at Riverside, thank you.
Very good, always a good thing to say. Alright, so we'll go to our next pre-arranged presentation, we have the Latens. Latens, right? You guys are real in the shipping containers?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll set this up and then I'll let the Laten speak just for a minute. We've been talking about shipping containers for quite some time. We had a conversation, couldn't tell you how many months ago. There wasn't a lot of reception to using shipping containers in more of a residential setting. I think that's what the Latens really want, have a conversation about. You did open the door for some opportunity or, or, or better policy maybe around the utilization of shipping containers in industrial and commercial settings. And we need to memorialize that into our development code. So next month, we do have a work session that's planned. My intent, it's gonna be focused on things that we're doing within our municipal code, not our development code, but our municipal code. And so shipping containers is one of the topics that we wanna bring back to you in a more formal code language kind of framework. But I appreciate if you just have a, just listen to what the Latens are asking for and, and I know this isn't the right opportunity, the right place for you to provide any input tonight. But I would certainly appreciate your individual input over the next several weeks. So that as we work to prepare for that work session in January, I don't come in with something that you guys are going, absolutely no way, I wanna find something, I wanna find that place where you're comfortable and it's something that we can reasonably implement and meet the needs of folks in the community, not just like the Latens, but others as well. So given that kind of preface, I'll turn it over to, I'm getting it from our husband, thank you.
So I know we've talked about it before. I just really want to come up with a solution on how we can have one. I don't wanna put it in my work, obviously it's ugly. It's an eyesore, you know, what's the hub of the town, I don't want everybody coming off the freeway seeing a giant storage container. That's why I wanted to take it to my house, you know, I can decorate it however you want. I will paint it like a storage shed, I will put landscape around it, you know. I just wanna figure out how we can come up to a yes solution versus having it uptown for everybody to see. You know, I mean, you come off the freeway and all those businesses on the north and south, that's what everybody sees. And they see a storage shed and they're gonna be like, ew, bro, it's a storage shed. You know, maybe I'm being judgmental, but that's not the first thing I wanna see when I go into a different town. So I just wanted to be able to take the storage home and stick it next to our shop. I know there was a few, I don't know if I would put the photos in there. Those were storage containers that we were looking at last year, obviously we wouldn't have that exact one. Cause that's come and gone. But we'd like to put it somewhere in the vicinity of the picture, we put a picture of our shop. There is room to either put it next to it or a little bit farther depending on what the code says. I know there's storage shed codes, so we would go somewhere similar to that. So it's just coming up with, how, how, how can we make it possible?
Well said. Does anybody have some questions? I mean, we're not gonna solve it today, but if you had any questions that you would like to maybe have answers to or thought processes to be able to get ready for our January work session.
If I may.
Yes.
So my big thing, as we brought it up before, was the potential of people living in it, right? That's not what I want in the back of people's yards, all in a shipping container, now it's all sudden filled with family, friends, stuff like that, right? We know living is expensive around here. I would like to try and figure out a way we can bypass that, right? Do something in our codes to alleviate that problem. So that was something, if you can think about it before the next meeting, would be something, brainstorm. And I think at the last meeting, they, I mean, they, they kinda explained, or they did explain, really it's for the business.
It's mainly for the business, yes.
Because of the location, you don't really have a room or an area to put it. And if you did put it there, it was gonna be like you said, an eyesore, it's just gonna be in the way. And so when it was first addressed, we didn't, I would speak for myself, we didn't really know that. And so when you come and explain that, that obviously is different. And so obviously I would think my opinion has changed slightly on, on the issue. I agree with Ethan, you know. When we first talked about it, it was about, oh, is somebody gonna be living in this, you know, or whatever. And so that's where we were kind of addressing it.
Yeah.
But now, but now we understand why you're asking.
I'm willing to have them inspected, and we have it put in and have the shelves put in and, you know, have it, have it put worth that. I'm willing to have them come and inspect it and see what we're, what we're doing with it.
And, and I would assume that there's, this is not the first time this question has ever came up in, even in the state of Oregon. So there's gotta be somewhere where we can draw from it and come to some kind of resolution on this that helps everybody.
Believe me, my neighbors are really nosy and they will tell you if somebody's living there.
So how, I'd like, I guess the lot size would probably be part of my concern is that, you know, how, how many things can you put on it? And I don't, I don't know your lot, I think it's probably a lot and a half or something.
We got two lots, two separate lots.
Yeah.
And one has a shop on it and there's enough to build a house on that other half.
And so you're thinking about putting the container close to the shop that's already there?
And it's the same building shop, put the same kind of siding on it, whatever you want us to do. It's a lot cheaper to spend $25,000 on a storage shed.
Yes.
A question I had, I'm sorry. You mentioned vouchers that you have given to Carlo?
Yeah, I'm sorry, they didn't get into your pocket, so, but we'll make everything available next month. And maybe for then, we can.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to see them before.
Well, that was just one of the, they have, they got new, I'll be willing to buy a new one.
Yeah.
It's just a little bit more money and there's no rust on them, no nothing. And they're nice.
It's just nice to see the visual of what you were thinking.
I can go down and get pictures of. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you. Thank you guys. You bet. Alright, action item, resolution 27 dash 2024, conclusion under the State of Oregon Deferred Compensation Plan.
Marta has information for this.
I think everybody's running into this, even the school district.
Very similar, the cities are allowed to participate in a 457B plan, which is a retirement plan for our employees. Which is not obligatory for our employees to participate in, like for them to make contributions, it's optional. So this is, one a retention and two a recruiting idea of having more than one 457B plan option available for our employees. So they would choose the current one that we have, which is Mission Square, or they would have the option of going with the Oregon Savings Growth Plan. This one is monitored and overseen by PERS. So this is the exact wording the resolution needs to have according to Oregon Savings Growth Plan for the council to adopt or allow the city to offer this as an option for our employees.
Any questions?
So do we have people participating in the Mission Square one?
Yes.
Besides administration?
Yes.
Okay, so now you're just deciding that they can have two options instead of one.
Right, they would choose one or the other.
They can't do both.
Correct.
What, is there a benefit to this?
They're, they're run by different companies, so the money is invested a little bit differently. And if you talk to either salesman, they're each gonna tell you that theirs makes a bigger profit than the other. So again, it's just giving the employees an option. They can look into both of them and decide which one is the best option for them.
I like it cause it's just another way to give your employees another way to invest. At the school district, we're only allowed certain things. We don't get the option either, get one, we don't normally get two, like, you know. Half lap or availability, we don't get both to choose, we don't get full choice. The district makes that for us. But I think it, I mean, if, if we're allowed to give more options to employees to choose, why not? And it doesn't cost us.
Right, there's no additional financial burden, there's nothing that we're gonna have, you know, it's gonna cost the city money to do. It's just gonna be giving the employees an option where they want their additional retirement money to go into.
Well, I'd like to move to approve resolution 27 dash 2024, resolution for inclusion under the State of Oregon Deferred Compensation Plan.
I'll second that.
Yeah, you got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? You have a question? Okay, Chief, are you first? You are.
We all are, all city employees are.
All city employees, okay.
That's your question?
Yeah. I, I don't personally care for PERS, so I would just, is this really something we're not PERS looking over? You guys might like PERS, I don't think, that's, I was curious, so. That, that was my discussion and question.
Any other discussion? Yeah, you got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So planning commission appointments, we have Sam Iron's letter of interest and we have Mr. Jones's letter of interest to be on the planning commission.
So Mr. Mayor, a little bit of background, we did, we did, we did publicize the vacancy. And it's not necessarily a vacancy, it's just the annual re-acquaintment. The two positions that are available are the ones currently held by the two incumbents. We didn't have any other letters of interest come in, so you'd simply be appointing them to their positions.
Then I move to appoint Sam Iron and David Jones to the planning commission, term ending 12/31/2027.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, so housing investment advisory committee selection.
So that list is before you. We have already discussed the Councilor Prophet, Pettigrew and Rockwell. They were interested from the council side. Now from the community and business, we need to select four out of that list. They've all been contacted, they, they're all equally interested, again, then it's up to you guys.
What are we gonna choose tonight?
It'd be nice.
And it was two community, two businesses, is that correct?
It was three community and a business. So three council, three community and a business, total of seven.
So is everybody on here available for community and business?
I am not sure where Ricardo lives, Michael Graham is technically out of the city. And I'm not, I don't know where Ricardo lives.
But it's, it's community, not city, we were doing outside.
Oh, oh yeah, then everyone would be.
But what can everybody fit under business?
Under business, no. Michael Graham's business, Ricardo Rosales's business, Yvonne Barrow's business, but also community. Michael Graham is also community.
Yeah, Bobby Barnes. Oh, hey Bobby, hi. Nicholas?
Nicholas.
Nico, who's works for the city.
Yeah.
Brian Migos is a supervisor, name Weston.
And I think Rico, Richard, Ricardo Rosales lives here in the city limits.
Yeah.
Does he?
Yes.
Okay, he, he is the banner. So what do you call it?
So you're wanting this hit?
Four.
Four out of this number.
Out of that number.
Two of them would be representative.
Add a nine.
Two of them would represent business and two, one business, three.
Community, correct.
How do you see this doing, happening?
What did we do the one time when we were, like an I did the tally or something?
Was that the legislative, was the legislative priority?
Yes, we can do that, something like that.
And we're gonna give you our four, Thomas will give you your, the four in the tally and priority or just four?
Yeah, just four, and the, the one time we've done this, we've done a secret ballot as well, like you wrote down the four people and the tally, didn't we do that at one point?
Not secret, they have to put their name.
Oh, yeah, with your name. Either way, however.
Not set up for that. Please, we need to do that then.
They just write it on the bottom of your paper.
Need to be a secret?
No, it doesn't. I mean it. Okay, I'll go. Okay. So I, Junior Drago, Bobby Barnes, Marissa Raddello, and uh Michael Graham. Okay.
I could go next.
Good.
Uh, Junior Drago, Nicholas Quiroca, Brian Mendoza, Michael Graham.
Uh, Junior Drago, Bobby Barnes, Marcy Raddello, and Ricardo Rosales.
You said Raddello. Okay.
I'll go next. So business uh would be Michael Graham, community, Junior Drago, Brian Mendoza, and Ricardo Rosales.
Hey.
Uh, yeah, Marcy, Junior, Bobby, and Ricardo.
Ricardo. Like, who'd you say? Marcy, Bobby, Junior, and Ricardo. Okay. If if one of them does not attend regularly, can we dismiss them and put one of these other people that are interested on? Yeah. So what is going to be our decision about how?
The committee.
I think it's it's missing three is what the the charter says.
For the council.
Well, how many meet? No, for committees.
Okay.
So we're planning on more than three meetings? Oh, I was just saying, okay, just checking.
Um, Mr. Hammond, after they're determined before you're going to ask them again if they are willing to commit.
And and all of them have.
Right, but but like, hey, the city council chose.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'll follow it. Good, good.
Um, Junior, Yvonne.
Wait, wait, wait. Junior, Yvonne.
Bobby.
Yeah.
And Ricardo.
My last one, you are the last one.
Okay, I chose Ricardo, Bobby Barnes, Graham, and Raddello.
Ricardo, Bobby, Graham, and Raddello. Okay. So Junior for sure.
Six, two fives and two fours. You've got a tie in the fours.
Yeah.
Michael and Marcy.
Okay.
Michael and Marcy.
So Bobby, we have one, two, three.
Junior Bobby and Ricardo.
Four. So one. One. Frank, I got it. Three, four. All right.
So I have you.
Very much. All right. Raddello, you have one, two, three, four. Ryan is one. You?
Yes.
One for Yvonne.
Yes.
So you have Junior, you have Ricardo.
This all set up. We should just go it out online.
Okay, and then, and then we have, we have Bobby, Michael.
You can't make decisions that way.
No, I can vote, but then the tally.
Do too? And Raddello.
So Chair, Junior has six. Bobby and Ricardo both have five.
Oh, yeah. So Junior and Ricardo were in, and then we need to select two more out of uh Bobby, Michael, and Raddello.
Bobby's in, he has five. I have, I have, Junior has six, Bobby has five, Ricardo has five.
Thank you.
Michael and Marcy both have four.
There you go. Thank you.
So we got to choose between Graham and Raddello.
Yeah.
It's not a fun choice.
It, this is down to who's going to attend every meeting. This isn't who would do a good job when they show up. It's fitting them in our schedule.
You ready to vote?
Yeah, and that's and that's really, yeah, that's all it is.
I don't know what your schedule is, but I don't know.
I think they're both equally busy.
Correct. Yeah, I would say, well, and who would, not that I'm trying to make a choice for somebody, but who has experience in this as well. That that's, yeah, I would say.
You want me to go first?
Let's go, let's go in order, just so that I can get your.
Uh, I'm going to stick with Raddello.
Okay.
Marcy.
Okay.
Michael.
Okay.
Are you a pass?
Oh, I have to choose. I can't pass it. They let them, I can't pass the buck. Well, we'll see if it comes to the three to three.
There you go.
All right.
Nine minutes.
It's gonna be a tie. I just.
Graham.
Okay, I'm going to choose Michael.
Okay. I guess I'll choose Marcy.
She knew what she was doing. Everybody.
Now I have to vote. I do. I don't think either one would be offended by.
No, I I'm going to choose. I choose the woman, uh, Marcy Raddello.
Okay, there we go. And then.
That sounds bad. I didn't mean it. It's bad.
No, and then Michael could be an alternate, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, excellent.
Maybe.
We didn't have a female presence on the board.
So you have Marcy Raddello, Bobby Barnes, Junior Drago, Ricardo Rosales. And I know it doesn't say it in here, and then as an alternate, Michael Graham.
Yeah, sure.
So now we just need to pass that.
Uh, move to appoint Brenda Prophet, Karen Pettigrew, Richard Rockwell, Ricardo Rosales, uh, Marcy Raddello, Bobby Barnes, Junior Drago, uh, but the alternate of Michael Graham to the housing investment advisory committee.
Second.
Yeah, you got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Economic Opportunity Analysis, PAC appointment.
I I have um I have two requests as as you look at this. One is, I didn't know which one you might be interested in serving, so the city council member is vacant. You can compromise yourself and pick someone tonight, or you could choose not to populate this with a city council. It's entirely up to you. And then, um, while I have Michael Hughes as the chamber board member, I would ask you to approve that as not specifically Michael, but a chamber board member. So um I reached out to him and we've had some conversation and he's like, the chamber needs to make this decision. So we want a chamber board member to serve. But the chamber board apparently is going to make that selection of who it will be. So I just leave that as a, to be determined by the chamber.
Right. Anybody wish to uh volunteer for uh being on this committee?
Can we just kind of what what is the economic opportunity?
Sure. So as we're working to update our comprehensive planning development code, um, and also work with a developer who is interested in doing an urban growth boundary expansion for employment land purposes, one of the requirements to do that work is to do what's called an economic opportunities analysis. It's a very well-defined type of study in state statute. Um, we uh will work closely with um Business Oregon as well as D L C D in this process. We've hired Johnson Economics to do the work, and basically what they're going to do for us is do what's called a buildable lands inventory. So they're going to look at what we actually have in our inventory of both industrial and commercial lands. And they'll identify, do we have enough? And if not, what do we need? And if we need it, how much do we need? Um, and what kind of parcel sizes for the kinds of industries that we're seeing um come to come to communities like Fordman in this region? And then what kind of businesses are we seeking to come here? So we have a fairly good inventory of commercial land. Um, we do not have a very good inventory of industrial land within the city limits. And so I I want to make that distinction. This is not about employment land in the county. This is about employment land within our um city limits and our urban growth boundary. Happy to answer any further questions you might you might have.
I'd like to be on that committee.
Anybody else like to be on that committee?
I would love to be on that committee.
Well, we got two.
We might not have room for both of us.
It's just another chair.
The other thing you can do is um just have more of a city council and then you two tag team on who goes.
I guess we could probably both show up.
Probably could do that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there wouldn't be an issue with both of you being appointed. I I just, there's a lot of this going on and I I don't want to bring you all out, so. But where you have an interest, I'd love to have you be engaged, so. So if there's two city council members, I'm okay with that.
Okay, cool. Sounds good.
And and all those people are great people to be on there.
Absolutely.
They might snap back down.
Uh, I move to appoint and list it in the visual individuals as presented to the Economic Opportunity Analysis Public Advisory Committee with the two added of Karen Pettigrew and Brenda Prophet.
I second that.
Okay, so we probably should um amend it, but we probably need amending with the chamber.
The chamber to be determined by now.
With the chamber deciding.
With the chamber deciding who's going to be their.
Their representative.
I second that again.
Okay, with the, though it's, you seconded it with the amendment.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
You bet. All right, we're down to. Yeah, please report.
Public comment?
I can get any public comment, so we don't have any public comment.
Bill went out when I came in.
Oh, you didn't put it in. Okay, you go ahead. Ask your guest.
It'll be real, it'll be real fast. Uh, I'm Gus Peterson. I am the new Marl County Commissioner-elect, and I just wanted to be here to introduce myself. I will be a regular. It's one of the things that I said I was going to do, and here I am, and I'm going to continue to be here. I look forward to the opportunity to to working with all of you. That's it. Also, actually, one more thing. Whoever came up with the idea to have kids come up here and speak, really, that was a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Please report.
Everybody should have in their packet of.
We don't.
Report now?
Yes.
Yes.
You haven't, we we really haven't had a chance to go over the numbers just because uh meetings was running long, so uh as you can see, the the uh monthly calls for service and total incidents have continued to increase, uh maintain a higher level. Uh, we looked at our numbers briefly today from last year. We're gonna well surpass those numbers uh of or total incidents uh that we had from last year. So uh things are busy. Um, I would remind everybody that it's uh holiday season, um and with that, uh
Yeah.
Be vigilant because uh our criminals are out shopping for your presence so that they can do what it what they want. So if you see something, say something. We don't mind getting a call and find out it's nothing, you know, drastic. So please, I would encourage everybody, if you see something, say something. Um, and you will see the officers out and about. Unfortunately, we have three officers that'll be on light duty here pretty quick. Taking care of some medical issues. Um, so it'll it'll be, we're we're tight again with.
That's called age.
I I know, I would not say that.
Age and being active.
But I don't know that those will be long-term uh light duty issues. We did uh go through a testing process uh for our open positions. And we'll have to say that uh we had several uh fire department personnel come and take the ORPAP, the physical fitness test that we do. Um, and they all did really well. Uh, your city manager participated. Uh, could have done better, but you did okay.
You can tell the time.
I don't remember what it was.
I remember. What was it?
Four twenty-six. Quite two seconds.
Oh.
So the the state sta- the state standard for ORPAP uh to to pass is five thirty, five minutes, thirty seconds, and so.
Is that a run?
What's that?
Is it a run?
Uh, it's a little of everything. It's it's an obstacle. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a fast-paced up and downstairs, uh balance beam.
So you don't have to be in the best shape.
Jumping, oh. Ask somebody who's in shape how much fun it was.
Oh, yeah, that that hurt.
It 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 looks super easy, but it's a butt kicker. I'm here to tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know when you're done. In fact, a lot of them, when they're done, is we we call it the ORPAP cough. You have it for a day or two, if not longer afterward. It's it's just, it's amazing how much it affects you. So uh, we did the uh testing process. It was really nice to have people come out. Uh, we off did a conditional offer on a candidate. Um, she is going to uh go through a background packet. Our backgrounds take several weeks, if not a month or so. Um, that's an extensive process, so we'll see how she does. If that goes forward, then hopefully she'll go to the academy in January. We're keeping our fingers crossed. Um, we're going to interview two other candidates, Captain Lynn, Thursday. Uh, so hopefully we'll fill the second vacant position. Um, if they're both laterals, we'll get into the academy at the same time. Or, excuse me, if they're both entry level, we'll get into the academy at the same time. Hopefully get them back, get them trained, and get them on the road. It's tough filling these positions. Um, we've been working with uh Mario Supovida to do a recruitment recruitment video. Um, hoping to in- increase uh uh interest in the law enforcement profession. Uh, Mario did a really good job, so we're kind of excited to see what that looks like and see if we can help get some applications. We yeah, um, I I I can tell you when I tested for an agency in Spokane um for two positions, there was over two hundred applicants for two positions. Um, we've been begging for applicants for six to nine months and got five.
The five, I mean, the two show up.
So it's really tough to recruit in this profession right now. Um, and I I will tell you, we've got good benefits and good pay, so um, it's just not a great time to recruit police. it's just not a great time to recruit police officers. Aside from that, uh, are there any questions?
Just one quick question on the numbers here, the felony arrests. I just want to make sure that that wasn't an error. March, you had twelve felony arrests?
I would, I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
I would have to go back and look at those, but that wouldn't surprise me.
February, yeah, actually.
Yeah. I, I wasn't here, if you remember at that time. I didn't come back until June. So, um, Lauren could have messed it up. I don't know.
Christina, I think you're on the wrong one. I think it's six in February, five in March for felony. Information cases, twelve and nine.
I'm, I'm right here. And it's the first one's January.
The, the nine, the twelve, the nine and twelve.
Not the columns, the rows. So felony is seven for January and six for February. It's the fourth one down, one, two, three, four.
Maybe you gotta go further down.
Felony arrest. Oh. Gosh. They're all single digit except for that line. That's why I wondered if that was accurate.
It, 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 it kind of varies in, in, in depending on what those felonies were. Um, it could, there could have been warrants, several warrants that came out at one time. It, I, I will look into it and, and try to verify. But I would guess it, it wouldn't be out of the realm for that to happen. It is quite a high number for March, but we'll see.
So after E S S T training for your, your new people, how long is your F T O approximately?
So when we hire somebody, go through the hiring process, uh, and get them through the academy and through F T O, it's a year process.
A year.
It's easily a year. Could be longer depending on how long it is to get them to the academy. Uh, we struggled for quite a while trying to get candidate, uh, uh, candidates through the academy. Um, just because of the backlog of trying to replace all these officers, the academy didn't have enough openings. And so they did a bunch of, uh, restructuring at the academy. Instead of going with forty students per class, they went to sixty, um, to try to take care of the backlog of all the candidates. We had what's almost nine months wait, waiting period on one candidate to get them through the academy. So it, it, depending on how long, right now, it, I think they still have some openings in December. Uh, but there's just no way we're going to get the backgrounds done, uh, for that December session. So it'll probably be January. So it'll probably be January next year before they're actually on their own.
Thank you.
Building Department's report.
Any questions? Okay, you can ask, ask, answer some of this, correct? I think he's there. Jose, are you there? There he is.
Yeah, I'm here.
Is there anything?
Anybody have any questions or comments for Jose? All right, that's easy for you, Jose. They don't have any questions for you, buddy?
Perfect. I like it.
Hey, thank you. Public Works Department.
Uh, Ross still out for a little bit, but I can do the best I can with some of those things.
I didn't know he's out.
Uh, Luis has been filling in for him and Luis had to go out of town for family stuff.
I know the Public Works let, uh, but tried to let me know that my dogs were out when they were wanting to do my reading of my meter. That helped. I need to get a little dog gag that says, get lost, call the mayor. They're like excellent skate artists.
You need to get a license for them.
They are licensed.
I thought when you got a license, you got a little head.
Yeah, but it doesn't say where you live.
And doesn't call the mayor.
She called the dog the mayor. But, yeah, he chews through wire. Yeah. Um, so yeah, that was a good thing they did there.
So there are no meters installed on the list in September. So September, October, November. So it's no meters. Is that?
Tony put a message up.
Oh. Okay, we have three hundred left.
What?
Three hundred meters left.
I should look if you could put one online.
But the radio read says we only have about three hundred meters to put radios on. That's what that said.
So this one is for new metal, new meters installed. And there's been no new meters in September, October, November.
And I think that's what that is, is the three hundred left.
The, the, yes, the new, new radio re-installed that says four hundred and fifty. They think they still have three hundred.
More to do. I'm glad we're not holding our breath.
Well, I think the, the issue originally was getting parts.
Parts and then.
And then that slowed down.
And then there were some kind of leaks and breakage on Columbia that absorbed all their time.
On Columbia?
I know you've known.
You can't tell, can you?
Yeah, not anymore.
And, and don't confuse the new meters installed with just the new meters installed. I mean, there's the radio meters and then there's new meters.
Yeah.
Brand new meters for brand new homes.
Right, right.
Water line. Yes. So I think that's my question. We haven't put any new water meters in for new homes since, since August.
I don't know, I don't know that that's accurate. Ross spent out a couple of months and so they may not have picked that up or that may not be.
So. Yeah, that's, that was my real question.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I'm sure that's not accurate. And the only reason I say that is because I know I have a new house next to me that they just put a meter. I mean, they didn't put both meters in at the same time.
Right, right. And River Ridge has had several.
Yeah, we've got River Ridge's building, um, again, they're in phase five. And then, um, Tuscany has recently done a bunch of homes. So I'm, I'm sure that those are blank and there should be numbers in there.
Okay. I, I assume as well.
Tony said there's been six or eight in the last three months.
Man, that sounds.
Or they just have an updated chart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
What's the new PD shed?
Oh yeah, that was a question. Police Department shed.
The storage shed back here behind City Hall in the gated area. The small gray and white shed.
Yeah.
And it's new, just a hit grid shed. Well, it's been there for months. We're just finishing.
Yeah, I don't think the electricity is there now, correct? I thi, I know it's all been insulated and cheated.
Cheated.
And they still have to do the heater.
I think the heater was installed.
Was it? Okay. Yeah, they've been working on back there. It's almost all done.
All right, we'll move on. Uh, Parks Master Plan, Taylor Waitman.
Wait, hold on more. Planning Department.
Did I do planning? Planning Department, sorry, Taylor.
That's okay, because, I mean, I think the biggest thought we've been working on is the stuff related to Parks Master Plan, including the E O A. Um, the next advisory committee to come will be to update to the development code and comprehensive plan. We're having that staff level kickoff meeting later this week on that project. So we're getting them all up and running and that's, that's really been my focus. As you know, uh, we also took on the contract with Gillum County. And I haven't put much in here about that work. Um, but that work is, um, is predominantly Stephanie Case's responsibility. Um, she's been, she, uh, she, there was some backlog when we first took that on in July and she spent the first couple of weeks, couple of months kind of dealing with the backlog and, and now is just trying to figure out the maintenance of it and how to keep things moving along. That's going really well. Um, we've added a new planner one. Um, when, after Nancy left, we hired Aurele Cambaro. She's doing a great job. Um, she's very motivated to figure it all out. And planning can be difficult. Um, there's a lot to learn and a lot to know. Um, and she's asking really good questions and is picking it up. Um, she'll be doing most of our type one and type two decisions. So, you know, approving homes and, and, um, doing the land partitions and, and no, we're not just letting her hang out there all her, on her own. We're, you know, providing some good training. But, uh, yeah, we're staying busy with that. Um, I think, uh, work on the, the municipal code is gonna, we're gonna have that, the work session in January. Hopefully we'll get through a couple of things. I think I mentioned last month that, um, there's really nothing that has determined how addresses are set in Boardman. And, um, we just have found some problems and some issues. And so we need some real clear regulation that says this is how we will address. And then we have some problems we're probably gonna have to figure out how to fix. So, um, just heads up on that front. Um, but yeah, just having, we're having fun.
Any questions? Thank you, Department. All right, Taylor. It's your turn.
Hello, everybody. Taylor Waitman. Uh, I had the privilege to join the Parks, Parks Master Plan, uh, Public Advisory Committee meeting on November twentieth, about two weeks ago, where we worked, uh, with the city, the park and consultants that they hired, um, to kind of figure out what exactly the Boardman need. Are we making use of our current assets that we have, which riverfront property and all the various parks throughout town? Uh, are we being safety compliant? Are there things that this town needs that other towns have that we could directly give that feedback to? How do we truly take advantage of our beautiful riverfront town? Uh, it's very diverse group of individuals. It's all people I see consistently throughout the community, whether they're involved in new sports and our schools, businesses, uh, community. Super great group, diverse. And I got, heard a lot of different perspectives. Um, where we gain, you know, outside perspective from consultants who do this for a living, uh, for the people that have lived in other towns and for people that have always been here in Boardman and know what their city needs and wants. Uh, so brief overview, they moved us into three different work study groups, uh, to talk about the various topics that I just discussed. Um, then we all gathered background, had a bunch of sheets of paper, we had bulletproofs and a lot of us, uh, marked on the same things. Uh, very productive meeting. I'm really excited for the next eight months-ish. I think it's about eight months-ish. Meetings, uh, continue to try and work towards gathering, you know, what is the future of Boardman Parks and Recreation going to be? Um, I enjoyed it. Thank you.
I, I would like to add to what Taylor said, that I thought it was well-intended. Um, a lot of wonderful ideas that came out. Um, I learned a lot. Um, you know, I, I don't live in Boardman, um, but, you know, eighteen years working from Marl County, I feels like kind of a second home, you know? And I really had my eyes opened about what's in our current parks. Um, and I think, I think the outcome of the Parks Master Plan is going to be, it's gonna provide a lot of really good revelation for the community. I think it's gonna give us some real sense of what we have. And, and I don't want to diminish what we have, but what I'm excited for is the list of what we need to do with what we have. Um, we know we need some play structures. We know we need some benches. We know, we know we need some picnic tables. And the biggest thing we got dinked about was our ADA accessibility. And, and I shouldn't have seen that coming, but it did kind of take me by surprise. Um, but I, I'm excited for the outcome of, of this particular one. So.
Yeah, two thousand twenty-six is gonna be the year of the parks.
Yes.
I think, I think it's also important to note, um, to do the history on Boardman. Who was the first park director in the state of Oregon was Sam Boardman.
Yeah.
So, I think that's important.
Yeah, we came up with some, I think there'll be some cool youth things that will come out of this. We need to name a couple of parks. So I'm going back to having the schools involved. Um, I think there'll be some fun youth, um, involvement pieces that we're gonna be able to work on over the next eight months as well. So more fun, more fun to come.
Your story.
And this is just a, so you guys know, since you're working on ADA compliance in your parks, Travel Oregon has a huge, um, portion of their efforts in the, the last couple of years, this next year. Is a focus of providing support to communities that are improving ADA accessibility for all tourism across the Oregon. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About how long was that meeting that you had that night?
Oh gosh, it was a little just over two hours.
Two hours.
Just over two hours? Yeah.
Pretty, pretty good. I keep it at two hours.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of lost track because I was with them most of the day. They got here about ten. Um, we did, um, we had a, a front-end meeting, uh, George Shimer and myself met with the consultant team. Um, then we did a, a tour of, um, all of the city parks, um, assets. Uh, we met for lunch, um, and then I got a break, um, and George joined them and they toured the district facilities. Then they came back, um, and we did a pre-meet and then we did the advisory committee. So I was with them from ten until about seven thirty. I think so. Long day. It was a good day.
And you asked them to then. Okay, so that leads me to my other questioning about the committee we just put in. Are, are you asking them to be daytime meetings? These people we just voted on to be on the. The housing. It'll be up to the committee members. You guys decide. Talk about it. Yeah, because I think that is a really a commitment, you know, and maybe one day to get started is, is everybody would be pretty agreeable with that.
Yeah, the advisory committee was only there for the evening. They were only there for the, what was it? Five to seven?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, I think. Yeah.
Because I was thinking if you were asking those people to take off work, we were, yeah, okay.
No.
All right.
We, we talked about the timing for the meeting, um, at, it might start a little earlier in the future, but for the most part, most of the people on that committee have jobs and five to seven is probably gonna be where it's gonna land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, Transportation System Plan, Heather.
So we had our meeting on Monday, November fourth. We had it in the afternoon and there were eighteen of us in the room. We were having some difficulties with Zoom, but we made it work. It's fun. Um, there were three technical memorandums that we talked about, um, outlines the Boardman community profile and certain trends that will be important to this work. Um, number two is a review of the place plan, adds a policy review, and three, starts to build the goals, objectives and evaluation criteria that will be used within the T S P. So, um, one of the questions that came out was what do you want to see in Boardman? What are some of the safety features? Um, what are, what are some of the danger zones that you see in, in the area? And we identified we need better lighting, we need, um, better sidewalks, we need better streets that have, um, that wider with turn lanes. Uh, one of the things that came out was the windmills that are being brought up and down the freeway. They have to get off the freeway because they can't get under the freeway and they're bottoming out as they're coming up that off-ramp and it's blocking traffic going back and forth for a significant amount of time. And which only impacts what's going on on the north side of the freeway as well. So that was one of the things we talked about. Um, we talked about truck routes. Um, we talked about the loop and there's no bus stops, there's no signage. There's no schedules out there. So nobody really knows where they stop, when they stop. And they don't have an app. And I know that they talked about an app, but they said that people voted that down, which I thought was kind of strange because I think an app would be really helpful. And that was one of the, a lot of the things we talked about. Um, fire and EMS, we wanted to get them involved because a lot of these things that we need to put into place um, is going to affect how our fire department and our police department and our emergency services are gonna get from point A to point B. So those are things that we have to take into consideration. Uh, we talked about how long trucks can park and designated parking areas. And do we want the city to even know it is a great place to park your truck?
Or we can work on them.
That, yeah, or work on them. It's, it's a big deal. Um, the next PAC meeting, um, and a public event is scheduled, tentatively planned for mid-January.
And I would add to that as well. Same thing. Um, the consultant team got here that morning. Um, I spent time with them. We did a tour. I mean, it was just two of the consultants for this one. Um, uh, Killson and Associates. Um, we had lunch and then we came back and we did the, and then I think they were gonna stop and check some things on their way out of town. So, um, technical memorandum four and five is under production and the next PAC meeting will be in January. And those, it'll be, um, existing and future conditions. Yeah. Uh, I think existing and future conditions memorandum. So moving along.
And that's a two-year plan, correct? T S P takes two years about?
No, it'll be done, it'll be done, um, by December, uh, twenty-five. Yeah. Yes. I know it, it started so long ago with the grant process. It's been years.
City Manager.
Hey, um, just to.
Hey, um just to reiterate with these committee reports, we're just, it won't be a Parks Master Plan. Meeting or report every time, just depends on where the meeting schedule goes. But again, the next one's gonna be an EO report. There's gonna be a development. And the hope is generally to have a community, a a member outside of the council being able to report. So I really do appreciate uh Taylor coming in and sharing that stuff because that's, that's the whole point, community input. Um so along with that community input, so we are, the plan is to work on South Main. Next year, go out to bid in February. So we would like to do a, like a community input session. On January fourteenth, I think that's a Tuesday. If that's okay, we do it here at City Hall. Six P M. That sound okay? Um there's not a whole lot you can do about a road, you know, the road is the road, but there's a few things with, you know, do you do a tree, do you grass? Uh bush or whatever. There's a few things, uh maybe a style of lamp. Uh we're gonna have the lamps come all the way down to Wilson. I'd also like to have a few lamps go north. So there's some consistency on the north end to keep that flow. So we'll have some discussion on that fourteenth, if that sounds okay.
So on that, what are you going to have to show people on the whole plan?
We'll have it.
So, so Anderson Perry or somebody will come with a street plan so that you can say. Oh, we're gonna have bike lanes, sidewalk, street.
You gotta have bike lane?
I think there's gonna be that. And there's gonna be a turn lane or all that stuff.
Well, and so this is, this is a meeting where you have to come and pay attention. You know, I mean, if this, if this is the meeting, we're taking public input on what Main Street's gonna look like. You want to generate a lot of people that you know. That would have an opinion to come and look at, to attend this meeting. Because you know how, you know how life is. Everybody agrees till they see it put down in cement and then they think that, oh gosh, that wasn't what I had in mind at all. And so if, if this is the plan day.
Are we gonna invite students?
Well, they're public.
Yeah.
I I would just think like, I mean. They're gonna be here longer than us at some point and. You know, live, probably live with this longer than us, I guess is what I mean, so.
Yeah.
If you ask.
We got the leadership here. You have your.
I mean, I sign, I mean, to give you an example, I I I spoke to our program today about. This specific thing of this tournament, like, hey, this is exciting stuff. Like, this is gonna be a big deal.
Well, I mean, if people can't visualize Main Street without those big old. Forest trees over there.
Let's keep those.
Yeah, right. Well, we might have to or we won't have any.
Windbreakers.
Not with those, that cable that goes underground. Because that's gonna be a chore.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, it's those kind of things that people are gonna think, well, okay, what would they do with that, that little white fence? And that green grass.
Yeah, I know, we just love the little white fence. I love that little thing.
I think it was, I, maybe you know this Karen, but I think it was Les Muir in a, in a. Boy Scout that, that built that little white fence.
I don't know. I just know that his daughter painted it.
My goodness, right there.
Hope everybody in their world.
Um and the, the last thing is I, there has been talk about doing a holiday committee. I would like to create a holiday committee for two thousand twenty-five now. And get some guidance to say, yes, you can start moving forward because we are gonna have a whole new South Main. We're gonna have a whole new decorating and we really would like to start purchasing things now. Get some input. The committee would, could then see, hey, this is what we're doing, what do we want to do? We have a couple already within city who would like to be a part of that.
The lamps going down South Main, are they going to have some kind of a feature for electricity so that we can attach something?
Correct.
I'm I'm gonna nominate my wife. So she'll leave my house alone. When is that one starting?
The city? Uh I'll, I'll get an official number and we'll do the same thing. We'll select it in January and then they can.
Start buying stuff on Clarence?
Correct.
So do we have a budget in mind for that?
We, we need to talk.
Ten thousand plus?
Uh we.
Well, that's what they, that's why.
Ten wouldn't, ten wouldn't be an unreasonable number to get started, for sure.
Correct.
So you didn't get me there, buddy.
Just for comparison, we have fifteen thousand at the station.
So we got a one-up on this, what she's saying?
We will.
Go right at it.
No, no, I was actually, I mean, this is kind of off topic a little bit, but I was like, when we were talking, I was talking to Mr. Hammond about this. I said, wouldn't it be nice if we could start developing something that very similar? Might not have to be the same or as grandiose and fort, as Hermiston, but where you have. Various businesses who purchase something and you have a little route that you take and you can go and watch. Lights and throughout the community where it takes you around. And it ends at a certain spot. Right now, it might could be the safe center or it could end at a certain spot. Wouldn't it be nice if we could try to do that? And uh be able to develop that and to be able to make something kind of cool that every, you know. After Thanksgiving, if all the businesses break out, take some sort of, you know. Decoration or whatever and be able to decorate. You know. I mean, I, I mean, I, you go, you go through Milton Freewater and you see their frogs. Okay, you go through St. Helen's and you see those, I mean, something like that, but it doesn't have to be permanent, but. Could be, we could always start with a Christmas and build it up to a theme. You know, it doesn't have to be grandiose, but it could depending on the business, on how they wanted to do it. I don't know, it was just something I was thinking about.
I put your name down.
That's okay, because there are lots of firefighter guys that like to put up uh.
There's a lot of corporate guys that actually like to do that.
That is super cool. I, I, you know.
Well, I bet you you could find. You could probably find towns that have, I mean, you look at like Leavenworth, you know. You know, places like that. There's, there's a lot of different towns that have different things.
Scottsdale, Arizona has a drive-through one and they use like um one of the tracks and they just drive around the track.
Now, yeah, I think there's some cool ideas. Okay, so I have, I have a list and I'll do a formal presentation. The final thing.
You put my name on there too?
Yeah.
You gotta be on it.
So um with the, with the Christmas, December twenty-fifth is a Wednesday, so we are closed on twenty-fifth. It has been tradition. We're gonna do a half day on the twenty-fourth, so leave at noon. And then on Thursday, start at ten, a little later, just maybe help with travel or something. And then the same thing on the thirty-first, noon on the thirty-first, closed on the first.
I was thinking that might be a little too much time off.
Two weeks, two, two weeks, like the school.
I think that's great.
That's all.
Alrighty, uh councillor comments?
Uh I would like to say, thank the city staff for installing all the Christmas lights throughout the city. They look really nice out there, so a lot of hard work. Do you like uh that our roads, the roads that we got worked on, finally got done? It was, I I had my doubts. I overbranded a pizza. It got done on time or whatever, but it was nice and I'm sure the people that lived down that street. Um appreciated as well. I'm sure that includes Mr. Keeper, Mayor Keeper. Um but they look nice and I get compliments at our business all the time about how nice the road turned out, so. That's important to know.
We didn't have as much snow, we put a few bumps.
Yeah. Yes, I think that is probably one thing that I have noticed because that people do. I saw some.
It's a really nice race track.
Yeah, I I did see someone the other day.
Said when everybody was like, when's it gonna get paid? Is everybody dancing to get their race track up?
Yeah, I I did see someone the other day testing it out like Tokyo Drift, like they literally, oh yeah.
It came around my corner, really.
No, I'm talking in front of our business, like literally. All the way around because there was no trucks out there.
Yeah, that would be a good.
Flying, I was like, okay, anyways.
I know, I'd like to be hypnotized.
Karen, all you have to do is pass that test. Oh no, I've seen the test. I can't do it. Even when I'm, yeah.
No, I mean, there's a lot of drivers. I would like to.
Yeah, I would say that I was angry kind of. I was kind of shocked. So, did you enjoy the show at least? I did. I was like, man, he's a pretty good driver.
The dude from Portland who talked to us said our issue is we just have bad drivers. We don't have safety concerns. We just have bad drivers. And that came from somebody from Portland.
At least he didn't know semis around. It was safer.
Er, safe.
Er, safe.
And you wanted to say it was really nice to hear from the high school.
Yes.
Thank you.
And middle school.
Any other councillor comments?
I think that Sam Boardman didn't mention that they have a concert coming up, December twelfth. And Wendy River didn't mention that they have a concert coming up. They are on the seventh, on the tenth. And our preschool's having a concert on the seventeenth. At Sage Center.
We were really lucky to have Sam Boardman and Wendy River tonight. We really were, just because of Thanksgiving. Because I think the schools were trying, they were. I told my wife they had to, she had to find somebody. Like it's just the way it was. And uh it's nice that the sixth grader across from the hall. And they, Harper and Fernanda really wanted to do it. Their. Their advisor, Maggie Scanlon, she's supposed to like birth tomorrow because her due date. So, and so she's getting out this week. So uh we're really lucky. I do appreciate everyone coming. It it's really nice. If you can't, invite somebody to come because it's really super cool. To have the junior high and high school come and share. And plus it might spark that interest in your public service of maybe you want to be. Have your picture over there because it's kind of cool to have your picture. They'll never go down. Well, I'm planning that would never be fair. Somebody will replace me. Um that's evident. But uh yeah, find somebody to come. Just like the, the Sam Boardman and Wendy River do, that they, they find somebody to come. And it's super cool that you come. That kind of makes my comments with your comments. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I'm gonna do a shameless plug on our, December seventh, she brought up the basketball game. Um this week, we also have a wrestling tournament. It's gonna be our first ever all-girls tournament. So kind of excited about that. So for those that don't know, my, my oldest son is our head girls coach too. And so it's gonna be our first girls only, yeah, on the seventh. It'll be here.
Oh, I didn't realize it was.
Boys will be in Kenway, but the girls will be here and so it's kind of a big deal.
December seventh?
Yep.
Talking girls, is there another term? Talking girls or somewhere else too?
No.
But that's the only girls.
Yeah, we have two tournaments, but the one that's, the first one's coming up is this Saturday.
I didn't realize the both girls was here. I thought it was.
So if you want to see it, girls, girls wrestling is the fastest growing sport in the country. So it's a big deal. We actually have a former Riverside athlete that wrestles now at Eastern Oregon University with my son. He's on the boys team or the men's team. Uh um. I was thinking about it for a second, uh Valeria Etchavaria.
That's great.
So, yeah. And that's, and that's a big deal for us because we just, the, the history involved with her getting there, it was a big deal, so.
How many girls at Riverside?
So right now we have, you got everybody? Eight, which is, we had nine. I think we're at eight, but I, I, I could be wrong. I think it could be nine. That is the largest amount of girls that we've ever had in our program and actually like total, we have almost forty kids out, so. Pretty excited. And that does include our junior high numbers. Right now, our junior high numbers are probably around fifteen per girl, so.
Wow.
It's cool, my daughters will.
Well, I guess we're doing the community updates, you know. Breakfast with Santa is probably the sad.
It is the sad.
Thank you.
And so, you know, you can all come and have.
Yes.
I mentioned Boat Wheel and the band also has a concert coming up.
On December twelfth.
Oh yeah, that's why you weren't in practice tonight, buddy. You had a band. Good job.
And it's on December twelfth, you said?
Yes, ma'am. It's um right now, it's on December twelfth. We're not a hundred percent sure on the date right now, but we believe it's on December twelfth.
It's a direct competition with Sam Boardman. Uh that's a tough, that's, that's tough competition right there.
Alright, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna suspend this meeting and we're gonna go into executive session. Uh we pursue it to O R S one ninety-two point six six zero two E. Which allows council to meet in executive session considered real estate. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. The public virtual Zoom meeting link will be closed during the executive session as permissible. Executive session meetings are not subject to House Bill eighty twenty-five sixty. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations. Or anything said about these subjects during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will, we will return to open session. Executive session expected to last less than thirty minutes and action is planned after we resume the council meeting. So I will pause the city council meeting while we go into executive session. Okay, we'll resume our city council meeting as we come back from executive session. And what's our flavor?
Well, so is this where we entertain some motions?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to move to lease. The land in Tower Road to the Boardman Parks and Rec District. But I don't have a dollar amount. Do I need a dollar amount for this?
No, we'll.
We'll negotiate?
Yeah.
I think it was just a consensus. I think they bring in the motion.
I am, specifically, I don't know.
And we have a consensus? Here's, we have a consensus. For the Tower Road RV Park.
It says consensus or motion.
Yeah, or a motion to a, yeah. And it's consecutive. Maybe they'll die there, but that's been done.
Keep moving on.
It died.
It didn't die. I guess. Thanks, Brenda.
Alright, next. Are we gonna all un-savor it since it was motion in the second meeting? Who's second? I did not hear who's second.
I tried to, but it kind of got shot at that.
I moved and I thought you moved and Ethan, okay, I never heard the second.
Is there any discussion about that?
Are we talking about the lease?
Yes.
Lease.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Our next item. Property sale, signage, northeast Front Street.
Personally, it's up for sale. If it's up for sale, like we need to be, have it out there, that it's up for sale, not just somebody happens to walk and. On it one day, right, come, come upon it. Need to be some type of a. Advertised somewhere, it might have been other than.
Yeah, currently it's online advertised.
It is online?
I'm not a big rabbit.
If people are looking to build here, they're gonna go online and look for what to sell. So if it's online. So if it's online, I'm giving it personally.
This is the one that is, uh.
And that's a signage, right?
Yeah, this is the splash pad part.
Yeah, correct. It's, it's all, all of it is, is up for sale right now. Yeah, all the frontage, all the frontage, correct.
I'm still a no.
I don't know, I don't want to sign on it.
Okay.
At this time.
Go.
So it's there online, but not. Just specifically asking for, do we want signage or physical signage?
A physical sign, correct.
I'm gonna say no.
I'm gonna say no too.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so it looks like we don't have a consensus. Potential sale of Northeast Front Street Lot forty-four hundred.
I'm gonna say no. I'm gonna know.
Just two no.
At this point in time, I'm gonna say no.
That's three.
I agree, no.
There's four. Hey, we don't have a consensus. Alright, that is all our discussions that we had at an executive session, this meeting is adjourned.